The time is now ten minutes after five and we will call this meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Advanced Transportation District to order will start with a moment of reflection. Dr. Gimbetta, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Any announcements, Mr. Arndt?
No, sir.
Brings us to item number three, which is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
(Inaudible).
I have a motion by Ms. Garcia.
Is this by ATD?
ATD.
Okay, thank you.
And a second by Mr. Martin. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Do we have any legal briefings? Time is now 5:12 and do I have a motion for adjournment of the ATD?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Yes.
We stand adjourned. Time is now 5:13 and we'll call to order this meeting of the Board of Trustees of Via Metropolitan Transit. Any announcements, Mr. Arndt?
Yes, sir. I would like to introduce to the Board the winners of the local rodeo, which was conducted a couple of weeks ago. They're in the audience, so when I call your name, you'd stand if you're in the audience. First in the bus category, Rogelio Dominguez.[135.16][135.16](Applause). Mr. Dominguez is a repeat winner and he was a winner in 2009, a runner-up in 2010, 2011, 2012. Was hired part-time in 1994 and promoted full-time in 1998. As of August of 2012, he had fourteen, fourteen years without preventable accident. Consistent recipient? Yes.[163.12][163.12](Applause). Which I think shows that the skill on the rodeo horse is carried over onto the street, so we really commend you for that. In the van category, Jesse Rodriguez.[174.45][174.45](Applause). Jesse is also a repeat winner of the Via rodeo in 2011 and 2012. Jesse was hired part-time in paratransit in 2002 and promoted to full-time later in 2002. As of March 29th, 2000, I'm sorry, 2012, he had nine years without a preventable accident and received commendations.[198.12][198.12](Applause). I don't know if any of our maintenance team is here. Maintenance team was not here tonight, but maintenance works that the maintenance workers do a number of individual events and then they placed on the team by those that have the highest overall score among those three events. In first place was Phil Davis, who's a twenty-eight-year employee.[222.23][222.23](Applause). Second-generation Via mechanic. He was on the championship team, the national championship team, in 2011 and 2012, so he's going to be off to defend his honor and our title. And he's been a rodeo team member since 2008. Finishing in second place, Carlos Fuentes, who began his career in 2009, first-time member of the rodeo team and is currently training for an associate instructor position. And in third place, Ernest Barbaie, who has been employed via since 1984, so pretty tenured employee, has been involved with the rodeo for several years and is currently also working to become an associate instructor. So those, that team will represent us at the International and hopefully bring us the gold again. So that's the results of rodeo. Congratulations to all the winners.[276.13][276.13](Applause). Lastly, at your place, you have a little packet. We have an annual contest. We've at least had for the last, I think, three years. Poetry on the Move, which coincides with National Poetry Month in San Antonio. And we open it up to anyone living in Central and South Texas. We received over one hundred and eighty entries and our judges selected the top ten out of one hundred and eighty. Those were complimented by ten pieces of poetry that were submitted to us through the Young Pegasus Program, which is part of the San Antonio library system. And those twenty poems were then submitted to four art schools in San Antonio. The Northeast School of Arts, the Henry Ford Academy, Alameda School of Art and Design, Say C, and Edgewood Fine Arts Academy. And the poem and the artwork was combined into what will be car cards or bus cards that go inside the car during the month of April. And so we commend all those winners and I think the Board all has a collection of all the winning poems and artwork. And so we're very grateful to the participants. We had an event here last Friday afternoon where many of the poets were able to come forward and do a public reading of their poetry, which is always great fun. And that's my report.
Congratulations to everyone. Thank you. We're going to do something different this month. We've moved up our citizens to be heard, so at this point, we'll go ahead and start that segment.
Mr. Chairman, we have six citizens to be heard tonight. As your name is called, you're welcome to come to the front to speak at the microphone. Or if you'd rather speak from where you sit, please raise your hand. The microphone will be brought to you. Jackie Bros.
Hi. I'm relatively new to Via trans service and just wanted to say that I'm very appreciative of it. I just recently heard about the initiative for the taxi service. I just wanted to let you know that is something that I think would be very beneficial to most of us, something that I hope we would be able to implement in the case of, you know, maybe needing to get to visit a sick family member or something at the last minute or something like that. I think it would be very beneficial and something that we all would be able to utilize and I think would be a great addition to Via trans service. So I just wanted to say that we are looking forward to that. Hope that is something that will happen. Thank you.
Celia Longoria.
First of all, I want to say thank you to Via for helping us with a bus stop on Mary Louise. It's a lot of help. Everybody has been praising it, telling everybody, oh my God, it stops over there too, you know? And I want to thank Via for that. And I have a question here. On the 96 Van Jackson, it says here that it's going to drift or currently turn back on almost in front of it, would be extended to Crossroads Park and Ride. Is it still going to do the little turn right there? Because it doesn't, it's not doing any justice. They don't pick anybody up. It's just empty. They go empty, they come back empty. So, you know, so, and I've seen it. It goes, because it comes from downtown. It says 96 Fresno only and the driver gets everybody off, you know? And he goes empty, he comes back empty. He starts picking up again when he starts coming back on Ferris wheel road, you know? But I do, and I do hope that it comes from downtown all the way to Crossroads. We need a bus like that. And I also would like to ask if, if possible, on the 97, because we need it so bad too, on Sundays, it runs every hour. Is there any possible way that we can get a bus to run like from town to Fort 10 and back again every thirty minutes on Sunday? Because it's hell and a half to have to sit there and wait every hour. We come out of HEB and the bus is already down the block. We just go, you know, and we have to sit there for another hour. And maybe, maybe something could be done because we really, really, really need it a bit. And that's all I have to say. And thank you, everybody.
Willie Mae Clay.
Oh, thank you. (Inaudible). Unlike the first person, first of all, good evening, everyone. Last time I was here, I think it was January, I had a beef. But since then, I think things have improved, so I know you're listening. First of all, I want to first thank Via for having another workshop to permit persons using paratransit an opportunity to, to give input to the nature of the service and to hear what's going on and to hopefully understand what's being projected. I want to thank you for feeding us. Sure made a difference. Because when I got off the van, first thing I did was run across the street to Bill Miller because I didn't think we were going to be fed. Because I knew cookies and, and whatever you were going to give us, I thought, wouldn't be enough for me, not early in the morning. When I came in, I almost fell off my scooter. I said, what's going on? They're feeding us. I said, who wants to be promoted?[656.54][656.54](Laughter). But it was really nice and I want to thank you. First of all, that was an outstanding workshop. I've been to a few, but out of all that we've had, I think this was one of the better ones. I want to speak to two things today and let me see if I can do it quickly without choking and looking at the clock here. One, I came in support of your accepting the involvement of the cab. I think that's a good inclusion, but there's some elements I think you need to look at. And I mentioned it to, to the staff during our break. Don't let those people just run wild. We need to train them. Because I've already used the cab in the past and I, folks don't know how to tie down. They'll start the meter running and they're still fumbling trying to tie down. I said, what you doing? I said, cut the meter off. You're not supposed to run that meter until you move this cab. Well, they will tell me, well, I know what I'm doing. I said, well, obviously you don't. So make sure when you train them, you tell them to cut that meter off before they move. Secondly, it's more than just training. They need to have sensitivity toward persons with disabilities. That not only applies with cab, but also with Via. I think if a person has the right attitude, they'll do a good job. And so I'm in support of including the cab. Secondly, the staff talked about this new program that was implemented December 23rd, where you start ten minutes, if the van arrives ten minutes before your negotiated pickup time, then you have to get on. And the driver starts counting the five minutes at the time that he arrives, he or she arrives. I don't think, given the Americans with Disabilities Act, you have that thirty-minute window. So within that thirty-minute window, Via's already using twenty of it. And with the introduction of the, the ten-minute arrival time, you're using all of the thirty-minute window. I think you need to give some thought to maybe reducing it from possibly ten minutes at the front end to possibly five minutes. Because I think it's wonderful that you want the service to be efficient, but I think, given all that we've been told, a lot has been taken away from the client, so I'm asking you to reduce it and consider the comments that were made at the workshop. You had already decided before you came to the workshop that you were going to implement it. Well, why would you make that decision when you hadn't gotten our input first? So I'm saying, consider reducing the front end of it to maybe five minutes and maybe extending it for another month because you heard our comments at the workshop. Thank you for that opportunity to speak to the Board.
Adette Garcia.
Hello. I also want to thank Via and I do appreciate all that you did for us without all of you, without Via. You're welcome. You helped us around the way. I appreciate you deeply and the drivers are incredible. Maybe they need a raise.[889.13][889.13](Laughter). I would like to, and it's a thirty, I do appreciate you. Bringing, I would like to thank you as well. Thanks for service. It's a wonderful implement. I do believe that, yes, they should be, as well as Star Shuttle, trained in the operations that Via, the standards that Via has, which are wonderful. And the time should be started, the meter should be once we're in, you know? Again, I do agree with the ten-minute, also that ten-minute window. Via, on December 1st, we were told we were going to, on the workshops, I appreciate the workshops. I would appreciate the agenda being more detailed as to not just the one, two, one through ten of what's going to be spoken about, but what's being shown on the actual screen so that we can make notations to keep up because a lot of information is being fed swiftly and the world, we're trying to ride as fast as we possibly can to keep up with the new implementation. The ten-minute window, that's an issue that I have, when we, that we've all had. It worked very well, like you said, January, February, and March, because they allowed it a little more slack. They gave us a little time, getting used to it. Henceforth, it worked so well. However, the five minutes to get on, more than ten extra minutes to get out there, maybe after ten minutes, we wouldn't be able to call and say, is it, especially in weather. We, the December 1st meeting, as I stated, we were told we were going to get calls to say, when you got to a certain degree and it was too cold, then come out, as we did in the summer. That didn't happen. It's going to get hot again and we are going to need to wrap the time. I think a hundred degrees is warm, especially when the disabled aren't on medications that can counteract with the sun, you know? And it does, the label, the label's on there. So if you could get that call, letting us know the van's arriving and we can out at that point, that would be a wonderful gesture. We appreciate the calls, letting us know that Via warnings are coming again. A hundred-degree weather is quite hot. I appreciate the fact that we could, when we do have on workshops, that we may please have more of them and the agendas be better implemented where we can keep up with what's going on. I do thank you again. I appreciate you, Via. For those ten extra minutes, do, you feel it in the heat very, very much, especially when you're exposed to the elements. And I want to thank all of you. Have a good day.
Sharon Monk.
Hello. I'm glad to be here tonight. I have several things I'm very concerned about. I've been riding Via for many years and until about the last two years, it was the big lift that would lift me up and into my place. Within the last, I would say, year to two years, Star Shuttle has been coming at least half of my rides. And one day, I had a girl that opened up the back door and told me to get out of my vehicle and get in her van. And I said, excuse me, but I ride in this scooter. Well, she said, I, I, this is my first day at Star Shuttle and I, I don't know what, what to do with you. And she was fumbling around with those straps and finally, I realized, this is not working. And I told her, I said, you need to call in and get help. So Star Shuttle supervisor came out and he said, first of all, all of our people should be trained. Trained for a wheelchair, trained for a scooter. But your scooter is dangerous in this van. And I'm going to turn in a recommendation that you not be picked up by Star Shuttle because it's not safe for you. First of all, you're not, you're not strapped in safe-wise when you, with a fast wreck or fast stop, this scooter can take off. And when I'm trying, trying to come down the back, if they're not holding on to my back and they won't even stop in the middle of the ramp, this thing lifts up in the front and it becomes very dangerous. So I don't know, I think that a lot of walk-ons should be on there and a lot of people that have vehicles that, like mine, are wheelchairs, should be on the lift more. And also, I would like to talk about the scheduling. I have had a lot of problems with scheduling and some of the drivers are scheduled to go three different places at 3:30 and it's just impossible for them to do this. And I think the scheduling needs to be really looked at strongly because talking about pickups, I try to go out there ten minutes early and sit out there on my sidewalk because I can't come out of my front door. I have steps. So I sit out there and I might wait out there twenty or thirty minutes after the ten minutes that I went out there and so the weather can be a problem. And I hope that the scheduling can be improved. We really need it and the drivers need it too. And I've had a lot of wonderful drivers and thank you for your help. Bye.
John Bulabasis.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. My name is John Bulabasis. I'm president of Yellow Cab here in San Antonio. I come here to address the VSP and Willcall contract service that you're going to discuss today. Yellow Cab has been servicing the greater San Antonio region for over fourteen years, including various community service and volunteer work. With over eight hundred independent contract taxi drivers, operating five hundred and seventy permitted cabs here in San Antonio, including twenty-five accessible wheelchair vans, we have the technology and resources to support over one thousand three hundred sixty-four existing accounts, including Fort Sam, Military Post, AMR, Medicare, and a cadre of other medical facilities and hospitals in and around this region. Recently, we have installed a new GPS-based dispatching service software that allows Yellow Cab to dispatch calls and maintain an average response time of under seven minutes. We also have the ability with this system to monitor and verify the vouchers for specific accounts providing a check and balance system. Yellow Cab dispatches and picks up over fifty-one thousand trips per week and puts an average of eighty-two thousand road miles on our vehicles per day. Along with myself and all members of our team, Yellow Cab is committed to providing the quality service and support for these Via contracts. Thank you.
James Goltard.
Excuse me. I'm here today to talk about the intersection of South Motor Field City Road where buses continue to have problems. I know Via had been in discussion with the city of San Antonio that tried to find solutions to this problem. I urge you to continue to talk to our elected officials and see what we can get done because as I see it, there is a lot of fuel waste there by buses. There's a bus operator time schedules that Via's probably playing overtime for and it can run into some good dollars that can be used elsewhere. What we have been advocating for is an over or an underpass there at that intersection to relieve traffic congestion and get the flow going because people are tired of being delayed by the trains. And, you know, that's been a problem for decades and I just can't believe nothing has been done. On the other hand, I have another issue that I'd like to speak to the MPO Board about, I mean, not the MPO Board, I'm sorry, the, the Via Board about, which concerns the MPO Board. The, the MPO Board is currently discussing incorporating counties like New Braunfels, Comal, Guadalupe into the, into the MPO Board. Now, I feel that this is going to cause problems because first of all, our MPO Board will lose seven percent of funding revenue. It's going to create more work for Via, Tex- dot, San Antonio, Bear County, and it would probably neglect projects that we need here in San Antonio. So I ask you to carefully think it over before you decide to vote on going with incorporating those boundaries or not. Think about all the projects that Via needs to do before they expand. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, there are no more citizens to be here.
Thank you very much. Let our public engagement personnel know whether you think it is more convenient to have citizens to be heard at the front of the meeting as opposed to where we've done it traditionally.
Chairman has asked me to take over the next item. We will now move to item number five, the consent agenda.
Adam Vicenio.
Yes, sir.
I request that we remove items Q and D on the MPO for, for brief discussion about the impending MPO challenge.
Okay, I'm sorry. Item Q.
Q and D.
Q and D.
Yes, please.
All right, item Q and D. You want individual discussion?
Please.
All right, any other items?
We also have item J.
Item J. All right. Anything else? All right, so I'm looking for approval for all other items with the exception of D, Q, and J.
So moved, withstanding exceptions.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's move on then to item five D. San Antonio Bear County MPO Unified Plan Work Programs Development.
Good evening, members of the Board. Item five D relates to a current call for projects that the MPO is having related to their Unified Plan Work Program. It is a two-year call for projects. The project that Via is wishing to submit to that program is a project that has been publiced traditionally through this program and that is the Fortune and Destination Survey in which we survey our riders, find and find out where they are going to, where they're coming from, so we can use that data in our planning efforts. So that is the project in which we will be submitting as part of that UPWP. Those projects are due by the end of this month and therefore that's why it's on the Board and we do need a Board resolution to accompany that project into that MPO process.
Would you clarify, this was presented to all committees?
This was presented to the Project and Planning Development Committee meeting, but we did not have a form of that particular reading.
Okay. Discussion, questions? Mr. Miller, did you have a specific question about?
No. We will move to the next.
Okay, so, so you want to take up Q as the companion? Is that your? Is that your, doctor, looking to do?
Yes.
Okay. Item 5Q, that's probably plan an organization more composition. All right.
Yes, I'll handle that one also. As was mentioned, there are citizens to be heard. There is a change underway, whereas in the area in which the MPO represents needs to expand and possibly expand. This is basically due to the growth of the area over the last 10 years based on census data. So with that, counties like Guadalupe and Comal have become or have an opportunity to become part of the Bear County MPO. There's been a lot of discussion related around this. The actual thought process for that group up there, the New Braunfels area, the Guadalupe, Comal, is that they did believe when the census data did come out or when this did come out, that they would be able to form their own MPO as part of that process. But they have actually been connected in as part of our process. So what we are doing here through the MPO and the VIA board is represented by Mr. Gambetta now, he's an appointee, and by Mr. Gerald Lee on the MPO. As part of that process, there are two things going on. One is a petition by those counties and those cities to the north of San Antonio to possibly become their own MPO. That is a request to the governor. The governor would have to do that. And that effort is underway and there has been no resolution to that to date. There is a parallel effort of looking at the makeup of the MPO board would be, would if those counties and those cities were to come into the MPO board jurisdiction and be part of the San Antonio Bear County MPO. So over the last 30 to 45 days, there's been a working group assigned. They had representative from VIA and Mr. Lee on that working group to work through the process of what the MPO board may look like as part of that process if those counties and cities were to become part of the MPO. And in the board memo, it outlines with the current board of 19 members, what the proposed board would be under that makeup. It would also remain at 19 members. And yesterday, the board did take action to move that process forward at the MPO. They took action yesterday as a body to move that process forward as outlined in the proposed MPO makeup. In that makeup, VIA would go from two representatives to one representative on the MPO board. TechStot would also go from one representative to two representatives. The Alamo area council of governments would no longer have representation on the MPO board. And the two state legislator positions would also be eliminated as part of that board. And that would allow five new members to be represented by those new areas to come onto the board to maintain the status of 19 members on the MPO board. That was the action that was taken yesterday. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Madam Chair, what would, Mr. Buchanan, what would be the financial impact if they were to separate into their own MPO?
That's an ongoing, we did bring in, or the MPO did bring in TTI to have that discussion. I think there are different opinions on that. But from everybody's standpoint, you would, you get more money based on population and growth areas, so there is more money coming into the area. And they would say, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, there's about a million dollars worth of money generated from that particular area into the MPO that we do benefit from, this region benefits from the bodies of people up in that general area.
The working group was asked to go back in fact and look more closely at the transit aspect of this because working group hasn't spent a lot of time doing that. But TTI has done that on behalf of the city of New Braunfels. And based upon the city of New Braunfels and the counties being part of the VIA urbanized, I'm sorry, San Antonio urbanized area, they generate, that population and the service that they currently run do generate formula funds that come to VIA. And if they were separated, a portion of about 1 million out of 32-ish million would instead go to those areas instead of coming to us as they currently do.
As a separate MPO.
As, go to the separate MPO or use for transit in their area.
It would flood through a rural transit program as opposed to urbanized transit.
A smaller, smaller program.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Would any of the members that have been discussing this, Mr. Lee or Dr. Gambetta, like to make a comment?
Yes, first is in the discussions, the first thing until we had TTI, the question I asked as an MPO member was when we're looking at it, as you've seen the growth of MPOs across the state, and I will give you example number one was Capital MPO, Austin's MPO, you see explosive growth between Travis and Williamson County and some of the surrounding areas. And the question I asked was if the Bear County, San Antonio MPO was to allow, for lack of a better word, Comal, Guadalupe to form their own MPO, how would that impact as we go after state and federal funding? And obviously, if we compete with these other MPOs, there would be a direct impact to the entire San Antonio Bear County area. And we've seen other MPOs grow throughout the state. It's kind of an arms race, for lack of a better term, that we need to continue to grow or else we could fall behind from the other MPOs in our own state if we compete for state and federal dollars.
These are two simultaneous tracks that are going forward, dependent upon what the governor, dependent upon.
These are two simultaneous tracks dependent upon what the governor's decision ultimately would be also. And it's because they have that opportunity because of two things, that one is the population density in that area has reached that particular amount, 50,000 persons as well.
And regarding density.
500 persons per square mile.
Right, right. The interesting thing regarding density, it has to be continuously touching. So the, what they do is 500, 500 individuals per square mile. So it couldn't be one area, it just, that means the area from New Braunfels all the way to 35, as Bear County's growing, is in, the density is continuous.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
That's very helpful. I think this is the first time we've had any briefing on this particular matter. I don't believe it came through any committee, so this has been very helpful. And I understand the process better, I think. I had a couple of questions just as to part of the process, and partially due just to fiduciary obligations, for lack of a better description, to VIA. And recognizing what appears to be an integral importance of transportation to the MPO, I'm curious if there was discussion as to why VIA's representation would be reduced, one, and TechStot also, two integral parts of transportation. So that's one question that that will discuss.
I echo that question because this is at a time when MPOs are being required to have public transportation represented on their boards now.
And in conjunction with that, was there any discussion about rather than keeping it at 19, just increasing the number of the members of the board for now? It seemed like it's at a large number already and a few more wouldn't have mattered, particularly since the technical advisory committee was simply increased. It seemed like that might have been another area to explore and just my question is, was it? And then also, was there any discussion perhaps if there needed to be reduction, why the city or the county perhaps did not lose one representative? It wouldn't have affected the balance in any way and would have maintained VIA and TechStot's position and maybe even ACOG, although I can, I can see how ACOG really is represented across the board anyway. And then my next question is, just assuming that the governor should approve Comal and Guadalupe and Kendall going elsewhere, would it be in the works to then restore the current makeup and numbering?
Okay, I'll try to take those in order. First off, there was a conversation about increasing the total number of bodies on the MPO. It was, our MPO was weighed against some of the other MPOs across the Texas region, and our representation seems to be aligned with those different bodies. I don't have those numbers right in front of me. But if you look up the makeup of like Corpus Christi or Dallas or somewhere like that, or Austin, the makeup of those bodies, those that are smaller seem to be more effective. So the group was sensitive to that impact or that effect, that it didn't become too unwieldy to try to get different thoughts and processes through the MPO and get consensus. So to answer your question, yes, it was discussed about raising the number from 19, but it was the consensus of the body to keep it at 19. So it was discussed. Now, the makeup of the MPO, once again, we did, the group did use comparable data based on other areas. And the city's representation and county's representation seemed to be in line on a percentage basis, based on those different categories. And the transit agency and TechStot representation was also in line. So at the end of the day, VIA going from one or TechStot going from one, but did not really weigh our total percentage basis on the MPO from a standpoint of having to work our way through the process and then get partners on anything. But it was thought that the makeup of trying to stay at 19 was key in trying to get there. I was not at the actual meeting where we decided, so I can't tell you all the dynamics. But there was some, some talk about increasing the city representation and county representation. So I'm guessing it was a compromise to maintain it as status quo.
If I might also add just one additional point, it was my first meeting, so, but I definitely picked up a vibration, if not an orientation, towards elected officials as opposed to appointed officials. And that I think is reflected in this instance. The reason that the city of San Antonio keeps four and elected and two appointed would be because of, rather than elected would be because of the quorum aspect of having to post the meetings for the MPO as well. So kept in keeping it as two appointed, but in general, it seemed that there was an orientation towards elected officials.
Thank you. That's all very helpful. And how about, I know it's hypothetical, but how about should the governor approve separate MPOs, will the current makeup be restored?
I believe that the current makeup would stay as is.
The discussion was it would continue as is. And the last thing, this was brought before the MPO voted, but it's not in its finality also. It's asked to go back to each deliberating body. It has to go through the city, the county, VIA, and Mr. Buchanan, who else?
Yeah, that's an important, TechStot. That is important. There's a four-party agreement that once all this is made up, there are four signatories to that operating agreement. And those signators are this county, city, TechStot, and VIA Metropolitan Transit.
Other questions on this item?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve items 5, D, J, and Q if there are no other questions.
We have not discussed item J yet.
Don't move too fast. Oh, Q.
So you moved to approve items D and Q.
Yeah, D and Q. Madam, I'm sorry.
Okay.
May I have a, ask a question about Q? Then do we need to be approving Q if it's not finalized yet at the MPO? I'm curious about, right, it's just a report. I guess I, for what it's worth, I think this is the first time we're hearing it. I don't know that we want to send a message that we're in agreement necessarily, although I think there's some, it seems to be that that's what's going to play itself out. But I think to the extent that we can still continue review and give feedback, I'd like to keep that option open.
And the working group is still active also.
Excuse me. There's also another meeting of the working group next Friday. It's being hosted by the city of Seguin. So the working group is still in deliberation.
I think it might be a great time to have the representatives of the MPO come to the next VIA board meeting and talk about the implications of VIA moving forward. Because in the end, it's about financing too. Like how does the public transit financing through the federal government continue to flow in this new ecology of the MPO? So maybe we should invite them here.
And I will also likely have a request from New Braunfels. If, if they end up in a single MPO, they are probably going to make a request of VIA to assist them with continuity of their service because they'll no longer be eligible for the funds that currently support their service. So I'm expecting to receive a written request from them shortly.
So you would.
Madam Chair, did my fellow board member, Parnik, did you, did you want to just not?
I would say that we not take any action on item Q, which was just a report anyway, but, right, but for the purposes of just sending the right signal, I would say that we're just taking information.
So amended, Madam Chair. So only include item D.
Second, need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And finally, item J was pulled? Questions about that, discussion about that?
I had a question about item J and I apologize to the extent part of my question could have been or should have been raised at the committee level, but part of it I think will be clearer on an item later in the agenda. But also just because of the amount of this contract, I think it's important to review and discuss and see where we are on it. My understanding is because of the nature of this contract, we don't need to go out for competitive bid again, correct? As we haven't. But noticing that VIA spent a little over $2 million to date on this contract, just wanted to clarify the extension has a ceiling price of 3.5 million. Is that an additional 3.5 million?
That's the existing ceiling price, correct?
That's existing.
Yeah, there is no additional funds being added to this contract.
No.
Only time.
So it remains within the 3.5?
Correct.
Yes.
All right, that helps tremendously. And my other question I'll reserve till later in the agenda. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? All right, now we need to act on this. Looking for a motion?
So moved to approve item Q. I'm sorry, J.
Second? All in favor?
Chair, is this a staff recommendation?
Yes, sir. It's a staff recommendation. They've been with us since 2010. They've done a great job with us. We've got some plans for some things we want to roll out here in the very near future. So we would ask for board's approval for the extension of this contract. They are a local firm and they've been performing well.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
They did the primo promotions, right?
Yes.
Very well received.
All in favor?
Aye.
That takes us out of consent agenda to item.
We're going to move up.
Ready to take over. Thank you.
We're going to move up item number eight. Dr. Mendoza.
Good evening, Ms., sorry. There we go. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, President Oren. I have a very brief presentation for you on this agenda item, but we have two honored guests in the audience and obviously sitting to my left, a very well-known to all of you council member, Diego Bernal, who is here to support this. And also from the San Antonio Convention and Visitor Bureau, Mr. Andres Munoz, who's Vice President, Marketing Communications. The council member has been a great champion for this, so I'm going to go through this agenda item very quickly for you. It is, as you have in your packets, item eight. You do have most of the information there, but briefly, just for your review, we are bringing this to you because it is a city of San Antonio event focused on economic stimulus for this community. This particular event called People in Espanol Festival is a free educational, community-wide event for the very, a great portion of the day. The activities promote community and cultural awareness. It also fosters public and private cooperation, primarily for alleviating one of our major concerns, which is reducing traffic congestion in the core of the inner city. It's consistent with VIA's transportation and environmental objectives, and it results, we believe, in increased sales tax that could be utilized to support our long-range plan for the future. The action I'm bringing before you today is an approval of a one-time exception to VIA's special event fee for Festival. It would be an international event in the city of San Antonio. And more importantly, VIA's participation would hopefully ensure its potential and permanence as a national destination event, which is of critical importance for the city of San Antonio. It's a one-time exception, as I told you, to VIA's special events fee. When we go out and we cost these events out, there's what we call a fully allocated cost. This particular proposal. This particular proposal, it's called a memorandum of understanding, really focuses on just providing from VIA transit advertising and bus service. If we were to cost that out for the consumer at large, we would probably be charging $92,240, a combination of advertising costs and bus service. But in looking at what it really costs us internally as a variable cost, we've calculated that for you, and that's really what we would be providing, is $46,000 to this event. It is scheduled for Labor Day weekend, Saturday, August 31, and Sunday, September 1. It would be free service to the public from 8:00 a.m. in the morning to 12:00 midnight. It's two days of service, at 192 hours per day, for a total of 384 hours. It's service to downtown San Antonio, primarily to the Henry B. Gonzalez Convention Center and the Alamo Dome, and we would be doing service from four VIA locations, the Crossroads Park and Ride, Madla Park and Ride, Randolph Park and Ride, and Brook City Base Center, a location there, trying to bring all of the community from east, west, south, and north to this event in the downtown core. That's really briefly what the item, you have a memorandum of understanding draft attached to item eight, you have the memo to the board and the resolution itself, and I'm going to turn the mic over now to Councilmember Bernal, unless you have any questions of me, and I'm available to answer any questions you have on this.
Just a quick, so it'll be at four of our park and ride locations, so for ease of the ridership, will they just need to attend, and it'll take them to the festival, or do they need to pick up some sort of pass?
They do not, at this point, have to pick up any pass.
So then, so then without, so then it'll take them there, and same way, just return them back without having to have any?
Part of all of this will be promoted on the People in Espanol, there's a huge promotional, international promotional, both in social media and all kinds of things that are happening for the promotion of this event, obviously, good for the image of VIA and good for the city of San Antonio on an international scale.
So going forward with the promotion, we're going to make sure that that message gets out, that?
Absolutely.
Do you need to come to one of the four locations?
Right, we will have maps, they'll, we'll do the routing, we'll put all that information out, and they will post it on their website to the entire public, and we will post it on our website also and promote it.
Question. Dr. Mendoza, is this a public affairs event, public relations, what is it?
It is a community-wide event. It is, it was brought here, first annual event was last year. They face some great challenges, the city of San Antonio faced great challenges, the major challenges were, when they came to the city of San Antonio for support, they were late entering the market, and secondly, the transportation, people couldn't get to the event, and it was, it was difficult for them to access, there wasn't enough information, and those that primarily this event caters to, because it's free activities for children and others, did not, you know, were not able to know where to go, how to get there, that kind of thing. So the attendance numbers were less than expected.
Is this a corporate-sponsored event?
There is a sponsor for this event, they have several sponsors, one of the presenting, they call it a presenting sponsor, is Target. They do a lot of free, a lot of this is role modeling, there's a lot of cultural awareness, and either of these gentlemen can probably speak more intelligently about it than I at this point, because they've been involved in the core activities.
Would you think this was comparable to the Essence Festival in New Orleans?
That is the attempt of this event, exactly, to bring that kind of high-level international recognition to the city of San Antonio.
My concern, Dr. Mendoza, is that I participated in the People in Espanol concert last year for two days. It was poorly attended, not because of transportation issues getting to Henry B. Gonzalez Convention Center. It was poorly attended because people on the south side of San Antonio, as well as the Latino community, had no knowledge of the event. You know, many of my friends listened to the radio stations, and they didn't hear about it. So I'm sort of concerned that we don't, I don't, me personally don't want to set a bad precedent, because if I hear this now, what's to keep the Fiesta people from saying, "We want free rides to Fiesta," especially if this is sponsored by People Magazine, who's got more money than Carter got liverpills?
It's a subsidiary thereof, it's People in Espanol, and it is, it is a corporate, I totally understand that, it is, it is a great magazine, but, and it does cater to the Latino community, but, as I mentioned, the two things that I've heard by attending the summit and the information sharing that they've done with us, has been primarily the promotion, as I said, they entered the market very late. I don't know that they totally, you know, came in with the strength that they have come, and they didn't have the advance that they've been doing this particular year, and I'm sure Andres and certainly Councilmember Bernal can speak to that.
So you are saying that they are all coming, they are coming in with a lot more advanced notice this time?
Absolutely. They've involved the community a great deal more, a lot of partners, and, if you want to take your question?
Sure, thank you very much. Let me, let me address your concerns first. I think it's important to note that it really was a span of four months. For those who haven't met, I'm Diego Bernal, the Councilman for District One, which you're in. I also should note that I ride the bus dutifully once a week, which has been a great experience for me. But to answer your question, two things. The first thing is that they were committed to doing the festival, at some point, they were shopping for cities, and they came to us, and we thought, we don't have necessarily a flagship cultural event of this nature or magnitude in this city, and we believe we've matured to the point where we can do it. Fiesta is fully built out at this point. The comparison to Essence is a good one, one, because it's the same group of people for the most part who are doing it, and Essence is now in its 17th year and draws 400,000 people. At the beginning, that was not the case, they had to build their capacity. That's where we are now. Because of that four-month span the first time, we're in an interesting place. One, we didn't have a lot of time. Two, the promotion wasn't that great. Three, getting the talent together wasn't, was a challenge for them. For the most part, the talent is announced now, so the big draws this year would be Demi Lovato and Alejandro Fernandez. For the younger folks, it's, we see Nia Andel, these are, these are big names, and so we have the chance to promote them early. But at the same time, because the corporate sponsors' eyes are on San Antonio, we want to put our best foot forward, and as we know, for a variety of reasons, the rest of the world's eyes are on San Antonio, this has to be successful. The worst thing that can happen to us is that we don't, that we get the opportunity to have a signature event like this, and let it slip through our fingers. Transportation was certainly a part of the reason why people didn't come down, the promotion was another big piece, I think, together, along with the city's very, very deep and steep commitment, it can be a success, and in fact, it can be an exponentially greater success, but I think what the world is looking for is to see how the city as a whole comes together to make it successful. We certainly are committed, the people folks are committed, the sponsors are committed, we just have to make sure that it's a smooth ride all the way around, and I want to make sure that I've answered your question.
You have, Councilman, although I want you to know that Luis Miguel was the star last year.
That's right.
And he was a big draw.
He wasn't, and in my experience in my district, it wasn't so much that people didn't know that he was coming, people were so unfamiliar with the event, they said to me, you know, like my barber, the guy changing my oil, or the folks on the bus, would say, "I heard about it, I thought about going, I wasn't sure what it was." What I've learned is that people in this town love traditions, and once we, once they learn that something will be there regularly, they're quick to embrace it, we need to make sure that we do that. I think transportation to the event, not only the daytime events, which are free, which focus primarily this year on health and education, but also the nighttime events, which I should just add, are produced by Emilio Stefan, which is certainly a step up from last year, that, that the transportation piece makes the ease of attendance that much greater, and it looks like there's an all-in, sort of comprehensive plan to make sure that the community can attend in the way that we do Fiesta and other events.
Thank you, Councilman. I think that what I would add to that summary of what Festival is, is they have, just to add to the point of time, they have had the time, and they have really done a great job in entrenching themselves in the community, and talking to all the community leaders about Festival, about the benefits that the Festival is going to have over their community, and they've gone on overwhelming support this year, with the understanding of the fact that it is there. One of the reasons why they hurried up last year was that they wanted to make sure that in year two, they had a product to sell. Now they do. They, they had Target coming in and activating its brands, they had Jeep last year come in and activated its brands, and they have a handful of other brands that are aligned for this year to sign contracts and be part of the event. As you all know, Essence Festival is a huge success today, and has helped the city of New Orleans be what it is today because of Essence, because people today go to Essence, and they try to buy tickets, actually, the next day to go to the next year, and that's how successful it has become. This is a great opportunity for San Antonio, and we are at the CVB completely committed behind it. We want to ensure that in future years, we have bigger tourism coming in that week, that weekend of Labor Day, and we think it's going to be a great success. I think another variable is the production side, which was mentioned as well, which is the fact that Emilio Stefan is putting his dollars and his knowledge and his commitment behind it. It's a guarantee that the lineup of artists and the production is top-notch. We think it's a great opportunity for the city of San Antonio. Also, our contract with Festival is a three-year contract that is already approved by the city council, with a possibility of a five-year extension.
Do you think you'll be putting heads in beds on this one?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And Councilman, my only, my only final concern would be that, first of all, don't want us to set a bad precedent. Secondly, I think they need help, and if they need some help, Councilman, I would recommend that our Public Affairs Department were to get involved with this issue. I'd really like to see it come from our department, because if the heads need to roll, I'd like them to roll on our end as opposed to on your end.
I think that, you know, word of mouth and promotion is probably the key to it. Surprisingly enough, there was a concern that we weren't going to generate enough heads in beds last year, that the hotel occupancy wasn't what we wanted it to be, and it turned out that we actually just made the mark. And if we just made the mark, considering what it was last year, I can't imagine it not being tenfold this year, we just have to make sure that we get it right.
You know, San Antonio needs a flagship international event, and we've got people who are experts at this willing to do it, we just need to put the proper infrastructure behind it to make it happen.
I have a question for the other Mr. Munoz, no relation. Do you all have a sense of the sales tax that will be generated this year, that was generated last year, that in turn benefits VIA? And if you don't, will you bring it back?
Yeah, I don't off the top of my head, but I think the point is, part of our contract with People in Espanol is that there is a scale of, the more they produce in terms of sales tax, the better, they will be rewarded as well, so it's a win-win for everybody.
In theory, we should be generating sales tax that would accrue back
Yes.
to VIA over the course of Labor Day weekend. And then let me ask you another, one last question, Councilman, for myself, are you, you are here on behalf of the city of San Antonio as our collaborator to ask us, this is a priority of the city?
Absolutely.
Can I call the question? Can I, can I call the motion? Do I have a motion?
I move a verbal.
I have a motion by Mrs. Presenya, and a second by Mr. Lee. Do I have further discussion?
I have one question.
Mr. Allison, the Dr. Gambetta.
I just had more of an internal question, as I understand it, VIA is being asked to contribute for general promotion or marketing, and also transit-related advertising, correct?
That's correct.
Which is an important piece of this operation. And so my question is really internal, will that advertising and marketing contribution from VIA come out of our existing advertising and marketing services contract and that 3.5 million dollar ceiling, or will it be in addition to that or separate apart?
We would be using line items from the existing budget, it probably would not come out of the advertising contract per se, because we wouldn't necessarily be using creative civilization for what we're doing here, the dollars that are involved here are the dollars necessary to develop the signs that we would put on the side of the buses and a raft on a bus. So if we use creative civilization, yes, the dollars for that would come out of their contract.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask what type of bus was going to be provided?
I've looked that up to operations, we're going to provide probably our regular buses, yeah, our 30-footers, whatever we use.
I noticed the environmental aspects were incorporated into this, and just to point out that not only the sales tax was not incorporated into the fiscal impact of this, but also the VIA promotion and the potential increased ridership, we probably will have a lot, I would think, a large number of people that do not regularly ride, or perhaps have never ridden the VIA bus, and it's a potential to see how, the quality of the buses that we have at this time, and just a sort of recommendation to, to operations in the selection of the various buses, so that in addition, I think, needs to be taken into consideration.
One of the things I have put on the table, going back to Board Member Lee's question, is whether or not we might be able to provide some sort of a commemorative-type ticket, and I've posed that to People in Espanol, which might be available at Targets that people could put up, and we could maybe collect those. I don't know yet any of those logistics, we're still working on this memorandum of understanding as per your approval, so I have asked that maybe for ridership counts and things of that nature, unless we use our, you know, automatic.
Final comment to Councilman Bernal, it's nice to know that Demi Lovato is part of the old-time group now.
Well, no, you know, I'll also say that, that, you know, they're trying to do a multi-generational appeal thing, and I also think that while there's a name I can't mention, there's, there's a couple other really, really big international artists that are on the cusp of joining in the evening and during the day, that even broaden that, that sort of generational spectrum.
Demi Lovato is only slightly younger than Diego Bernal.
I know, that was the point that I wanted to make, is the way you presented it.
All right, well, thank you all for coming, and we look forward to seeing you on Labor Day. I'll go ahead and call the question, there's no further.
I just want to thank the Councilman personally for being here, because I think that shows the commitment of the city, and I think that's something that we should take note of and certainly give more support for. Thank you for being here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. We'll go back to item number six.
Good evening, board members, I'm here to present a proposed initiative, an exciting initiative for your consideration, that will introduce taxi service as part of the menu of services that we provide for our VIA Trans customers. I'm joined here, I think, in spirit by many of the members of our family of VIA Trans customers who have joined us here tonight to show their support for this initiative, and so I think we all thank them for, for showing up tonight. The overall goals of the VIA Trans Taxi Initiative, it's really one element of our overall business plan, to accomplish a number of things, to obviously improve the quality of VIA Trans service, which I think we've been doing over the past four or five years. We also, of course, keep an eye on the efficiency of our service delivery, and our newest goal has been to completely eliminate any trip request denials. In short, we want to be the best paratransit system in the country, and that's something that we committed to, to our workshop participants this past Saturday. To accomplish that end, as you know, we've been implementing a number of strategies in the VIA Trans program, this is just a list of some of them, they've been comprehensive, they've been things in terms of technology, communications, revising our customer policies and procedures, and the one that's highlighted tonight, of course, is the Taxi Initiative. In terms of the impact of these strategies, we are making, I think, significant progress. If you compare some of our performance metrics for this year versus last year, we have an increase in passengers, we have higher on-time performance, it's gone up from 82%, 83% to 87%, 88%. We've had an We've had an increase in our productivity. And most importantly, I think, we've had a significant drop in the number of trip request denials in our system, 57 or roughly 60%. And just recently, we reached an important milestone in the VIA Trans program. For the first time in its history, three consecutive days in March, March 15 through March 17, we had zero denials. So all of the reservation requests that were called in were filled. And so I think that's an important achievement for the program as a whole. In terms of the taxi program, it's obviously a supplement to the core VIA Trans service. In the big scheme of things, it's, it's not going to mean a large increase in the capacity, but we think in terms of the mix of service that it provides, it will be an important supplement to the service that we currently provide. There'll be two kinds of service that I'll get to in a minute, what we call will-call trips and then subsidy trips, which are basically direct taxi trips. It obviously will mean better service for our customers, more choices for them. It acts as a tool that we can increase our overall efficiency in terms of how we manage our demand. The cost will be about $750,000 per year. We have 50% federal funding lined up for the next two years. And I'm confident with the continuation of the new freedom program, we will have federal funding lined up well beyond that. And just to clarify, there is no constraint in terms of using this funding for operating dollars.
I don't understand what new freedom means.
New freedom is a program that's provided by the federal government to help establish new programs to expand the spirit of ADA accessibility law. So it's to provide something that goes above and beyond the normal requirements of ADA.
And is this initial two years of funding coming out of that program or is separate?
50% of it comes out of that. And there's more funding coming. We get a, it's a formula now, not discretionary.
Formula funding.
Yep.
Ongoing.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. I think that's important for people to understand that even though we have an initial two years going forward, that will be a formula fund.
In terms of the first type of program, which is for will-call trips, as I think most of you know, we have will-call trips, which are open-ended return trips from medical appointments for people who don't, you don't always know when your appointment will take place, how long it will last. Currently, our customers call VIA and seek to have their trip filled. Depending on what time it is and what the demand is, we may have some difficulty filling that and customers may end up waiting a significant amount of time to get their trip filled. So the way it will work now is that we will have the taxi option, the dispatchers will have the taxi option at their disposal so that they, you know, during particularly busy times, they can move the trip over to taxi and we anticipate a significant reduction in the wait time for customers on their will-call trips. They will pay $1.95, which is the regular VIA transfer, and VIA will pay all of the remainder of the full meter charge. The advantages of will-call taxi service, as I mentioned, shorter wait times for our customers. It helps the dispatchers keep other trips on time because a lot of times they have to try to fit these will-call trips onto other, onto other manifests. And then the taxi service is less costly in terms of comparison to our own service or the service of Star. The second kind of program is called, I'm going to call it direct taxi service. In this case, VIA Trans customers directly call taxis to request a trip. They will pay $1.95 at the start of the trip. At the end of the trip, they will pay anything in excess of $10.95. So that means VIA is going to provide a $9 subsidy for that particular trip. We're going to cap initially both the will-call trips and the direct taxi trips to coincide with the $750,000 of funding that's available. So we'll have to, just have to see how the demand plays out. The advantages of the taxi subsidy program, the big one is same-day requests. So customers, when they have emergencies, when things come up, they can call on the same day and, and get a reservation for their trip. The other one, a few, a few points down, the potential to reduce VIA Trans trip denials. We want to reach that zero denial rate on a permanent, consistent basis. And this program, along with a few other things that we're doing, will hopefully, hopefully help us reach that goal. So where do we go from here? Obviously, we're asking for your approval of the resolution to award the contract with Yellow Cab. We'll have mailouts and a significant public outreach during the month of April. And then we anticipate launching the program in May of this year. And so I would recommend that we, that the board move forward with approving that resolution. Thank you.
Well, let me begin by congratulating you on your zero denial milestone. I think that's huge. Let me also say to the people who are in the audience that over the course of the last four years, the Board of VIA has sat here and listened to you and we have tried very hard to make sure that we brought some measure of innovation and interaction and that we are trying to improve the quality of the service and the diversity of service that we offer to this community. So let me ask for a motion to be put on the table. I have a motion by the Chairman of this committee. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a second. Any discussion, questions? Mr. Lee?
Well, now, as Past Chairman. Past Chair of the Accessible Transit Advisory Committee, I really do want to give a few thank you. I want to thank Mr. Frost and Mr. Ham for their hard work in this. I know it's taken a while to get here, but it was wonderful during Citizens to be heard, to hear the positive responses from the ridership. So these are exciting times and I think we are becoming more and more responsive and listen to what our riders had to say and could not be more excited to see this launched in May. And thank you so much.
I just also wanted to thank Mr. Lubezis for making an appearance today on behalf of his company and their partnership.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And thank you all for staying through that item. We appreciate your presence at this meeting.
This agenda item is to review VIA's capital funding program. I want to mention at the outset, we do have representatives from our financial advisory firms with us, Paul Jack with Estrada Yonohosa, and then Chris Allen with First Southwest. Troy and Richard were traveling today. They're in New York doing some rating as agency presentations. This presentation is one which we wanted to bring to you at this point in time despite the fact that we are just now entering the budgeting cycle. So obviously, numbers are going to be changing in terms of our capital spending projections, our financial projections. But that being said, at this point in time, we still are at a point where we can see that we're going to need some debt financing to help complete our funding picture. And so we've looked at our spending plans, our financial projections, some of the related financing needs, and we want to talk a bit about what we see in terms of a, a big picture and the need to do some debt financing. Action items that we have is strictly for information, but we will be looking for, from the Board, a green light to proceed down this path, which will include, as we're outlining it here, our first public debt offering. We'll be talking about the process involved in doing that, going to the rating agencies, et cetera. And so the various items that we'll cover, we'll cover are listed on the slides that you see before you. I will tackle the first portion of those items and then the financial advisors will go from there. The overview and recommendation summary here notes that we have updated VIA's financial projections to assess capital program financing requirements. Again, numbers will change, but we still have a pretty good feel for the big picture and what's needed. And we've come to a conclusion that we're going to need at this point in time, looking at the numbers that we're looking at, perhaps around $50 million in net debt proceeds to help complete our funding picture. This will change a bit, but we'll take a closer look as we proceed down this path. Contractual obligation bonds, consistent with what we had in the five-year plan last year, will continue to be used in the future for any vehicle purchases, revenue vehicle purchases. We did build the projections off of last year's five-year plan. We've made various revisions as appropriate, for instance, sales taxes for the year. We ended up coming in higher in 2012 than we had projected at the time we developed the budget. And so we rolled that forward, for instance. And then we have, we've had various changes in the short-term capital program financing, just the timing of that. Sales tax revenue, this is a key assumption, was assumed to grow at 4% through 2014, 3.5% thereafter. Those numbers are developed based on review of Moody Analytics data that we subscribe to and using a model that we have used to project forecasts. We also, we also have utilized the services of Saber Institute, Steve Niven, a local economist who's done projections for us as well. Operating expenses, we have assumed to grow at an average of 3.1% over the next 10 years. The range was about 2% to 3.9%. And here's really a key point I want to make. Prior to going to the rating agencies, we recommend showing at least a 1%, 1 percentage point differential between the sales tax growth rate and the operating expense growth rate. You really need that spread to kind of put yourself in a position where you have a nice financially viable model where the numbers work out the way we'd like them to work out. The projections that we've looked at for the 10-year period, kind of detailed numbers here, let me just focus on the column on the right and talk in round numbers. Basically, over the next 10 years, we're looking at revenues on the order of about $2.8 billion, looking at expenses of about $2.3 billion. And then when you take into account proceeds from bonds, net proceeds of about $264 million, and subtract out the debt service on the debt over that period, we have about another $100 million net between those two items, giving us a figure of about $607 million that'll be available for capital expenditures. We have at this point in time, based on very preliminary numbers as we enter our budgeting process, capital spending figures that total about $628 million. And so we expect to draw in reserves in the amount of about $21 million over the next 10 years. The net proceeds number is net of a $2 million reserve amount, and so we get back to about a $19 million reduction in reserves. You can see here on the bullet points, we've noted that debt issuances that we're looking at will be FY '13, $51 million net proceeds roughly. And then over the 10-year period, net proceeds of about $264 million through debt. And the one line highlighted there, cash capital reserve ending balance, that, that is kind of what's left over after all the other reserves are taken care of. And you can see that we, at the end of the 2023 period, have that real close to zero, which tells us that the numbers, as we've plugged them in, are lining up the revenues and expenses in a way that makes sense where we, we aren't going below where we need to be on reserves. If you look at this particular slide, again, a lot of numbers, so I'll just hit some highlights. I want to mention that total, the capital spending, again, equates to 628 million over the 10-year period, $51 million in FY '13 bond proceeds is what we're looking at. That's roughly the size of the debt issuance. The bonds would be used to pay for $27.5 million would go towards short-term capital program projects and other projects, about $23 million. The spending of those bond proceeds could be accelerated by utilizing some reimbursement resolutions that we already have in place whereby we can reach back in time and cover some expenditures already incurred. And so we'll be taking a look at that and figuring out how much exactly we can cover with money already spent. Contractual obligation bond, CIP funding of $3.1 million in FY '13 reflects proceeds from FY '12 issuance. I want to note that, as you recall, last year, we had four private placement bond issuances. And then finally, all amounts shown are very preliminary and subject to change. I want to, just one more comment, that item up in the far, kind of in the upper left-hand corner, $75 million, the second line, carryover grant funds. We are including in our expenditures the $75 million of funds that we have from carryover that we plan on spending in FY '13. If you look at debt, debt over the 10-year period is expected to total $273 million net proceeds, $172 million is for KOs for buses and vans. As you recall, we're utilizing that mechan, that financing mechanism to cover our revenue vehicle purchases. Debt service will grow to about $26 million in the year 2023. And MTA Fairbox revenue bonds will be refunded as planned, but are reflected in above, above in accordance with the existing agreement. We didn't, with our $51 million issuance, we took out the, the existing ATD issuance because that was an ATD bond issuance that we planned for next year, but the MTA, we've left as is for now. And with that, I'll let the FAs take over and talk us through the next remaining slides.
Thanks, Steve. Again, for the record, my name is Paul Jack with Estrada Yonohosa, serving as co-financial advisor to the Board. We have a few more slides to go through. We'll try to go through them quickly, but please stop us and ask us questions at any time. On slide seven, we summarize the preliminary bond plan of finance as we have it right now. I'd like to stress that these numbers are preliminary. They will be refined and will change as we get closer to the final, you know, finalizing the bond sale. But they're the placeholder that we're using for planning purposes right now. So based upon the information that Steve just went through, you'll see we have an important schedule on the left-hand side of this page, which is the sources and uses of funds. So, you know, as we go through the process, we'll continue to update this schedule. It will show you at the top, the sources of funds, which is coming from the bonds being sold, the proceeds of the bonds being sold. And then the uses show how those bond proceeds are applied. So right now, our project fund, we have a placeholder of a little over $50 million. Those will be the funds actually used for the, the capital projects identified when we finalize the bond issue. We have about a little over $5 million that will be used to pay off one of the private placements we did last year. This will be the permanent financing for that, that piece of debt that you issued. Then we have reserve funds and cost of issuance related to the sale of the bonds. On the right-hand side, again, we describe the use of proceeds, what, what projects. And as we refine the plan of finance, we'll, we can get down to the specific projects that are being funded. We also highlight some of the financing statistics. Right now, we have a placeholder of, of the final maturity of the bonds not exceeding 30 years. We anticipate that can be shortened up. We have our estimate of the, of the borrowing cost, the interest rate, which kind of at current markets is below 4%, you know, around 3.66% right now, and the annual amount of the debt service to be repaid for the bonds. Again, these are placeholders, they'll change, but just for working purposes, that's the plan.
How expectant are you about that interest cost of 3.66%?
I believe that was market, but we were still, we still try to provide some cushion in there. So again, if we shorten up the maturity, that, that should probably go down a little bit.
And that's pretty cheap.
Yes.
Historically cheap?
Yes. We are at historically low interest rates.
So if you were going to ever enter the market, VIA has traditionally been a pay-as-you-go system. If you were going to enter the market and issue debt the way virtually every other public entity issues debt, now is the right time.
That, that would be our opinion, sir. Yes, sir. Going to slide eight, this is our, it's a 10- Going to slide eight. This is our, it's a template timetable for events. The schedule of getting to actually, getting the bonds prepared to be sold, selling the bonds, and then closing, where you actually receive the funds for the bonds, we are estimating around 15 weeks. We're actually in the process of actually putting real dates to these milestones listed here. I just wanted to highlight a few of them to you. You'll see near the top, we have defined bond structure and update numbers. That's basically the schedule that we just went through. That will be continued to be refined as we go through the process. So up to around the last three weeks of the process, we'll be working on that schedule and then finalizing it around the 12th week. Another item which Chris Allen will get into in the latter slides is, we also anticipate that, and we'll be recommending that the board engage what's called an underwriter. That's an investment banking firm. They will be the firm that'll actually sell the bonds to the public on behalf of the board. And there will be a process for selecting, actually it'll be a group of firms, and there will be a process for selecting those firms. The major milestone in here, aside from selling the bonds, is the rating agencies. This will be the first public bond rating being requested by VIA, so we will be preparing a presentation to represent the credit of VIA to the rating agencies. And there will be a process of actually presenting that to the rating agencies and then getting a formal rating from them. And that will probably, once we get the rating from them, we'll be in a position to release what's called a preliminary official statement. That's the prospectus or the offering document, which is legally required for selling any public security. And once that's in the market, then the process is pretty formulaic. It will be about four weeks from that point to closing, pricing, you know, pricing the bonds and closing and getting the funding, what we call a financial close. So those are the major milestones. And then on pay, or slide nine, this is a similar slide that we went through when we did the private placement. Just again, just to identify for the board, to be familiar with the category of private advisors and consultants that will be involved in this transaction for bringing these bonds to the marketplace. Financial advisors, obviously, Estrada Hinoza and First Southwest Company have been serving as your financial advisor. You will also have a bond counsel, which will represent you on legal matters and providing you a bond opinion. We already mentioned the underwriter and the syndicate of underwriters that will be formed. They will also have an underwriters' counsel, which is a legal counsel, which will be providing them opinions to make sure that the underwriter has legal opinions for being able to actually sell a security to the public, to sell bonds to the public at large, make sure they're in compliance with all rules and regulations. And lastly, engaging a bank to serve as pain agent registrar. So your bonds will be held in the public. They'll be traded between multiple investors. VIA's responsibility is to make its principal and interest payment to the pain agent, and it's the pain agent's job to make sure they get that payment to whoever happens to be holding the bonds at that point in time. And with that, I'll turn it over to Chris Allen to kind of go through the other major decision that is, you know, how to, the form of bond sale that you can choose from.
Good evening, Chair and members of the board. Again, my name is Chris Allen. Work with First Southwest Company. We serve as co-financial advisor with Estrada, for the record. There are two different methods of sales by which VIA can offer its bonds through the capital markets. I'm going to talk a little bit about each and then talk about why you use one over the other in different circumstances. Competitive, there's, the first one is a competitive sale, and the second one is a negotiated sale. In a competitive sale, bonds are offered through a notice of sale. So we, as a financial advisor, will help you develop an offering statement called the official statement, along with the notice of sale, which will be sent out to potential investors and underwriting firms. That will dictate a specified date and specified parameters by which these investors will submit bids. Bidders, as Paul mentioned earlier, will be made up of a syndicate of broker dealers or investment banking firms, and the syndicate which offers the lowest interest rate or the highest price for your bonds will be awarded the bonds. Once the bonds are awarded to this particular syndicate, the syndicate is at risk for selling the, reselling the bonds to the public investors. A negotiated sale is where, as Paul mentioned, the VIA or the issuer would select a syndicate prior to the bond sale. So you would select a group of underwriters to act on your behalf to purchase the bonds and resell the bonds to investors. This method of sale is, allows a little more flexibility. You know, the bonds are offered on a particular day, although that date can be changed right up to the sale of the bond. So there is, it does provide a little more flexibility. On the day of the sale, we, as co-financial advisors, will act on your behalf to negotiate the appropriate price or interest rate, therefore making sure that you get a market interest rate at that time. Next page. Talk a little bit about the differences and the reasons why you use one method over the other. Generally, a negotiated sale is used when the credit is unknown or new. For instance, in the case of VIA, it's not an established credit. It has not been sold in the open market, so there will require substantial education to the investors. You hire the investment banking firm early, and they work to market your, market the bonds to demand the most response.
How do you hire an investment banking firm in this situation?
There's several different.
Do you have one that you all have already chosen?
Typically, what we do, we have not selected one. Typically, what is, there's a method is, it's typically we'll send out an RFQ or an RFP to investment banking firms that are reputable and are able to sell bonds.
Are there investment banking firms that have better profiles for clients like ours who are new to the market?
Yes. And in that RFP and RFQ, we will weed those investment banking firms that do not have the correct amount of experience.
Do they tend to be national? Are they local people?
There will be, a lot of times it will be national, but there will be regional or super-regional where there is local presence, you know, because a lot of times you like to go to the retail investors that are local or local investors within the community so that they have an opportunity to invest in the bonds.
And is there, in that RFQ, do you, since we've never done this before, right?
Right.
This will be our first time.
Correct.
Then are certain investment bankers, are they passing their credibility on to you? Is that what they're doing by introducing or taking on the process of educating the investors about your?
They're basically supporting.
About your stability, right? I mean, this isn't a complete education to them. I mean, VIA has an extended track record of operating as a transit institution.
Right. What they're doing is basically providing their capital so that when we go out to sell the bonds or go out to the investors, they will purchase the bonds in the event that we cannot sell all of the bonds. So you want an investment banking firm that has the experience in transportation, as well as an investment banking firm that has the capital on its balance sheet to support the transaction. And typically, as Paul mentioned, you'll have a lead underwriter or the main underwriter, and then you'll have a syndicate or a group of underwriters that will also support the lead underwriting firm.
And just to add to that, I mean, to your point, we believe VIA is a very strong credit. It's a very good credit. The main thing is it's just a new credit. And so the investment banking firm will help us market it. You know, why, you know, who are the investors that are interested in buying sales tax-backed bonds? And, you know, why should they be interested in buying a VIA bond with all the other, you know, bonds out there that are available for them to buy? And so it's really more of a marketing effort. We think it's a good credit. It's just not out there trading. So people can't look to the secondary market and say, well, here's a VIA bond that was sold five years ago, and this is what investors currently buying it at. So it's really more of a marketing, identifying investors that have money and that would be willing to actually, you know, show the attention and focus. So to a certain degree, it's really, you know, they're a marketing arm for you.
Thank you.
And another reason that you would use a negotiated sale is refinancing or if there's complicated structures, you know, so that investors or the underwriter will act on our behalf to discuss the, or to educate the investors so that they understand the transaction. If you go to the last page, we would recommend, you know, given the information that we've proposed henceforth, that we would use a negotiated sale. Competitive sale is typically a well-known credit that is an issuer that's in the market annually. It's, the transaction size is manageable. It's not a story bond, if you would. There's no real educational process. It's a name that's been in the market and is easily sellable. And with that, I would, you know, answer any questions if you have any further.
This is not agendized for action. You're just bringing it forward for information. My question, I guess I have one more question for you, which is, what is the timeline? So given the fact that we're at historically low interest rates, even in a negotiated, I assume that what you're telling me is that a negotiated sale has a tendency to be slightly more expensive than a competitive sale. Not necessarily.
Not necessarily. We just think it's actually the avenue which we believe will get you the best price. If you went a competitive route, since it's a little bit more risky just because they have no credit, they might actually hedge a little bit and charge you a higher interest rate because they're a little bit more at risk. So we actually think the negotiate process will get you the better price. That's why we're recommending it. And in terms of timing, we're budgeting a 15-week process, which, you know, would probably put us some time, you know, three to four months from now. So, you know, kind of midsummer.
Okay.
And we will move that as, you know, quickly as possible with, really, I think the primary goal is getting to the ready-to-see presentation, which would probably be, you know, in the, you know, outwards of eight weeks from now, six to eight weeks.
Any other questions? Thank you. I have number nine, also Mr. Land. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Make sure you're talking to the mic. You were pretty quiet earlier.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. This agenda item is to cover our automated fare collection system contract. Last month, as you may recall, there was a presentation, and the board said that they wanted us to come back with a final contract, that they wanted to see that contract, and that you wanted us to tell you what is in the contract. And so this presentation is designed to cover those areas. The scope of the contract includes onboard fare collection systems for 430 buses and then all our vans, both VIA-operated and contractor-operated. Also, it includes a revenue collection system for the VIA garage facility, data collection and transfer systems, includes a card-based solution. VIA will later transition to an account-based solution. It also includes magnetic stripe and barcoded media solutions, includes customer service terminals, retail point-of-sale devices, and ticket vending machines, along with fare media and miscellaneous items such as installation, training, and software, et cetera, the various items listed on this slide. The implementation team members for this project include GenFare, GFI. They will be the prime contractor, and they'll provide the fare boxes, TVMs, and cash handling equipment. They will also manage the project. Trapeze will be the subcontractor. They will provide the software system that'll make the whole thing work. The VIA representatives on this project include representatives from virtually every area of the organization. A variety of different people is noted up there. We also have VIA board advisory members, two of them participating on this project. And then also Luminor Consulting, who I failed to introduce because I think everybody knows them at this point, but Neil Polling, Jignesh Patel, and Bridget Kara. The key contract terms and conditions summary I've got here, this is a little bit of the tell-us-what's-in-it piece of the story. In the contract, we, of course, cover all the items that were in the scope, the equipment, the software, and the other items. The fare boxes that we'll be getting are GenFare Odyssey validating fare boxes. Currently, we have GenFare GFI Sensibil registering fare boxes. The system design will include a card-based system. Eventually, we plan to transition, as I noted earlier. Warranty will be a one-year warranty, which starts upon beneficial use of the system. Software maintenance, 12 years are included. We have a Trapeze backend office system. That was demonstrated to us at the Phoenix Fair Collection Conference that was held last week. Luminor was there with us, along with various representatives of VIA. Trapeze was there, GenFare GFI. We did get a good demonstration of the Trapeze backend office system. But in the contract for a safety net, we did reserve a right to direct GFI to replace the system at no additional cost to be if it proves to be any problem, which we don't anticipate. Data ownership, VIA will own the data generated and collected by the system. For liquidated damages, we have provisions that are a bit higher for the Phase One equipment. For Phase One equipment, if not delivered by September 30th, 2013, which is the RAR deadline for some of the funds that we get, there will be $1,000 a day. And except for that exception, liquidated damages are $500 a day. There will be a milestone payment schedule for this project. The price came in at $11.7 million, and the DBE utilization had a goal of 15%. We're able to achieve 15.3%. This next slide summarizes the DBE and local firm utilization. Local participation came in at 7.1%. That's 2.7% from local DBEs and 4.4% from local non-DBEs. I also want to mention that GenFare is currently working with local businesses to achieve more participation, and is hopeful that not only more can be achieved for this contract, but also for future contracts with other customers. The DBE goal that we have, 15% achieved, 15.3, involve 10 different subcontractors. Three of those are local. The local participation consisted of eight firms. Those are all listed up there. The various ones who handle sheet metal fabrication, for instance, along with program management, installation, freight handling, electronic assembly, and printing. Made great progress on the local participation. I know this is of great interest to the board, and we did start, the initial proposal had 0%. When we came back to the board in February, they were at 1.6%, three firms at that time. And final contract, 7.1% involving eight local firms. Key items that have been settled, have been working diligently, mainly Luminor, Terry Dudley, and the procurement group at VIA, working to settle various things and get a contract drawn up that we could actually utilize as the basis for requesting a best and final offer. And I just want to touch on some of the things that were addressed recently and that are part of this contract. The warranty period will begin upon VIA getting beneficial use of the system rather than upon equipment installation, which is what GFI GenFare initially proposed. Our initial wording had system acceptance, but we got with them, and we feel that beneficial use is a mutually satisfactory criteria for warranty beginning. Liquidated damages, I've already talked about those a bit. Here you see the definition of Phase One equipment. It includes the fare boxes, revenue collection equipment, and TVMs primarily. Data management reporting system, we added wording that the hardware and software for encrypting and transmitting credit card data would be PCI compliant. Added that, those words, PCI compliant, that's payment card industry, and it's certain standards that relate to that. The additional thing we added in that section was that the contractor shall be responsible for providing advice and consultation regarding PCI compliance of the system. So in other words, GFI GenFare agreed to work with us, partner with us on this effort to make sure that we remain PCI compliant, although ultimately, it is our responsibility. Support and maintenance requirements. Support and maintenance requirements, we have a, have some wording that was added that said the contractor shall provide during the 12-year period a reasonable level of system configuration support, and we elaborated on exactly what that means in the words that you see. Data reporting functions, we made changes to help ensure that the reporting would be fully satisfactory to Via. And then, at the bottom of the screen, you'll notice that we made significant areas, excuse me, significant improvement in the areas of price and local firm utilization. I talked about the local firm utilization already, and the price, we were able to get a good reduction from what was originally proposed. The system operation items I want to mention, how is the system going to work? Well, we're going to have GFI GenFare Odyssey fare boxes. These feature a swipe card reader to process magnetic documents. Also, there's a TRIM unit that would be mounted within the fare box cabinet, and it provides the ability to read, issue, and encode magnetic fare documents. We also have an option for a limited-use smart card dispenser or a barcode printer, either of those would replace the TRIM unit in the Odyssey fare box if Via went with that option. I want to mention, too, I failed to mention, Larry Shafalo with GFI GenFare is here today, and so any questions regarding things that he might best be able to address, he is here as a resource for that. Onboard smart card processor barcode reader is also included. It's the Trapeze TSQ 300. There's a mobile ticketing application, optional communication network. Made a comment on that, that if we, when we get to the near-real-time communication, the cellular network would be what we would utilize. But there is an option of using the existing radio network as a potential low-priority communication channel. Data management reporting system is designed around sound principles that are summarized on the next slide. And then, customer relationship management system, we feel that's a robust system. They demonstrated it several times for us in detail at various webinars that were attended by the Farebox Committee. The data management and reporting system design principles, I just want to highlight a couple of these that we feel are particularly important. One is the reliance on standard programming interfaces and protocols. Feel that that's very important. It's platform independent. You'll notice down around midpoint of the page, software coding is designed with a view to future platform integration, also very important. And then, it's adaptable to any network configuration. Since communications are handled by standard protocols, you can adapt to various network configurations. There's a variety of other things listed, but those are some of the more important ones. Feel these are very sound principles upon which the system, data management reporting system was designed. The timeline, I've already showed that to you before. It's included for your reference. The project objectives likewise, that was in the last presentation. And then, our recommendation for a contract award, that we covered at the last board meeting, the highlights from the GFI GenFare proposal, so I'll skip that. But I wanted to say that our recommendation is to award this contract to GFI GenFare. They are a division of SPX Corporation. And again, want to mention that they were ranked number-one technical proposal by all eight members of the evaluation committee. Current projects that GFI GenFare has are noted on this slide. There's a variety of them, along with a number of references. The references checked out very favorably. Firms had very good things, or excuse me, agencies had very good things to say about their experience with GFI GenFare. The project option selection, that we're going with is to go with a card-based system. And the reason for that is, that's a system that's widely used in the industry today. We will be able to transition in the future when we feel it is most advantageous to do so. The decision was made, talking to, we got input from GFI GenFare. That's the path they recommend for us. Lumenor Consulting, we worked with, did our own additional research, and really feel that that's the path that makes sense. That recommended approach will help ensure a timely implementation with proven technology, with the ability to transition, as I already mentioned. And then, I want to mention that a key difference between the card-based and account-based system is that a card-based system operates and requires connectivity to a backend system on a real-time basis. That comparison of the two systems, and open versus closed gets kind of technical, and so for that reason, I've included at your places a document that gives you a good kind of industry standard definitions of the architecture, the account-based and the card-based architecture, the open systems, and the other things that are on there, variety of definitional things that are included. And then, we also have a sheet that, for you, summarizes the various projects in this country that are, that involve open, either account-based systems or open systems. And so, it's kind of a status of the various pilots and things that have been tried with the various agencies, and I hope you'll find that as a useful reference. With that, I wanted to talk about the next steps. The next step would be, of course, to obtain board approval, to award the contract, sign the contract, and issue a notice to proceed. Meet with GFI GenFare, Trapeze, Lumenor, and our implementation team, and provide updates to the board going forward at appropriate times to keep the board fully informed, and of course, work with the two board advisory members closely throughout to ensure that we get the board's viewpoint on all these matters. With that, again, we have Larry Shafalo with GFI GenFare on hand, as well as Lumenor, and we'll be glad to address any questions.
Mr. Chairman, I had a question.
Well, let me ask for a motion to be put on the table. Do I have a motion? A motion by, Mr. Perseñio, in a second, by Dr. Gambetta, the two members of the advisory committee. Okay. Mr. Miller.
Mr. Glasscock, are you satisfied with the warranties, well, the systems operations for this particular plan for GenFare?
Why don't you get in front of the microphone? You're now being broadcast to 50 people out there who want to hear what you have to say.
Okay. Let me respond to your question by saying the operations group actually put together 95% of the RFP. And we focused on objectives, including maintenance, as well as trying to free up the operator from some of the chores of collecting fares. So, we think this goes a long way to really help out both the operator and the maintenance side of our functions here.
Thanks, Mr. Glasscock.
Gary, the warranty provision, taking into effect after we have, what were the wording?
Benefit.
Yeah, beneficial, if you will, occupancy, if it were a vehicle. As opposed to oftentimes, warranties kick in upon receipt of the equipment, and can sometimes expire before the equipment is fully installed. So, that was a good move.
And I'd like to say that that was one of the differentiators in the different proposals, I believe, is the warranty.
Yes.
That was a factor.
And Jeff makes a key point. We have seen projects over the years where implementation is phased in, and you can take delivery of equipment during the first phase, and it really not become fully functional until later in the delivery period. And in some cases, the traditional warranty period will expire in the duration.
And just to add, one of the difficulties that occurs often around the country is by not making the decisions upfront, and therefore leading to change orders and delays and installation. There's, we heard some evidence of that from other places.
Yes, sir.
Very appreciated.
I just joked that I feel like I got landed, but I know it's a lot of information, but this is one of the most important decisions we'll make on this board, and we will live with the system for how long?
12 to 15 years, at least.
So, I think that the two members of the board who sat in on the decision, right, feel confident in moving forward. My question for our owners' representatives would be whether you feel like at this point in the contract negotiation, that we're getting a good deal? Like, you've done everything that you can to ensure that we're spending this money wisely?
Yes, sir, we do, and we have.
And the only comment I would have is, I think until we meet that deadline of spending the money, you know, the federal dollars, that we ought to borrow money, right, that we should probably hear it, even if it's just in a consent agenda item, a monthly update on the implementation of the program. Any other questions?
I want to say on the negotiated price, I wanted to congratulate Mr. Lande, Dudley, and the team, the overall team, Mr. Glasscock, on that negotiation, and ultimately, from budget, in terms of expenditure that we made, it's actually 50% of that expenditure, which we ultimately, compared to budget, are saving.
So, who is the person here from GFI GenFare? Come on up and ask for the contract.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank you for the opportunity once again. Very insightful questions the last time, and we have been working with the staff quite a bit. I do want to say that we are still negotiating with several local firms to try and increase our local content. We understand this is very important. And our Director of Purchasing was here interviewing more than 10 firms last week, and we expect to follow that up again as well. So, we continue to look to support the community. This is understandably a very important project for Via, for the entire region, and it's also a very important project for GenFare. And so, we do thank you for considering our proposal, and we would very much like to have your business.
Leo, what's your last name?
Shafalo is my last name, Larry.
What is it?
Shafalo.
Shafalo, okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Perseñio?
I just want to say that beyond the fact that your proposal was outstanding, your company has shown a tremendous amount of responsiveness already, just in the items you just mentioned, and the fact that you had such an outstanding presentation, and your president took the time to come to the presentation, and responsiveness to, I think, our staff has been tremendous. And so, we look forward to working with you. We've already seen great strides, just in a short time.
Thank you very much.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you all.
Thank you for your work. That brings us to item number 10. Mr. Buchanan?
Good evening, Chairman, and members of the board. Tonight, we would like to continue the dialogue as discussed of moving the modern streetcar project forward. You might remember that we are on a timeline to have a locally preferred alternative for the streetcar alignments this summer, and tonight, we'd like to show you six different alternatives that we would like to move forward into further analysis. So, real quickly, Kyle Cahy with the program manager is here with me this evening, and he'll take over the presentation here in a minute. Real quickly, we're going to talk to you about the schedule. You've seen it many times, but just to remind you of the schedule, we will then show you the conceptual screening analysis that has hopefully whittled down some of the alternatives, the universe of alternatives, and we'll show you the detailed alternatives and the screening methodology that we're going to go through as we rate those alternatives to get us to a locally preferred alternative. And then, I will, in the presentation, updating you on some of the upcoming activities, including a public meeting on Thursday of this evening. So, with that, Kyle?
Good evening, members of the board. It's a pleasure to be able to continue our discussion. What you see in front of you is a very aggressive schedule that we have discussed about going through our alternatives analysis process. We are essentially at the end of the second step depicted on this schedule at the end of March. You'll see that that is the conclusion of our conceptual analysis, as we move more into the detailed analysis of a smaller set of alternatives. You also, just to remind you, the red dots that are depicted on this schedule represent key milestones, the conclusion of each of those major phases, but it also represents key points of contact with stakeholders and with the general public. And toward that end, we are scheduled this Thursday night at the downtown library to have our second public meeting, to be able to present this information that we're sharing with you this evening. I do want to kind of, as this schedule, we're going to be back again every month as we get to work our way toward August, at which point in time we would hope to have an adopted locally preferred alternative. We will be bringing that back to you in July. So, we don't have a lot of time. We're going to be covering a lot of information in the next few months as we move forward. So, looking at this, as you might look through a funnel, we started with the universe of alternatives. I'll show you a picture of our 16 alternatives in a minute. We're working our way down through the conceptual screening analysis, through the detailed screening of a short set of alternatives, coming up with the locally preferred alternative at the end. As you look at where we are in this process, we are concluding the conceptual screening efforts, as I said earlier. We're now identifying the small set of detailed alternatives, and as of right now, we are conducting the detailed screening of those small set of alternatives. So, we began our process at the conceptual screening stage back in November. We identified a possibility of 16 different street alignments that would connect the west end, the east end at Robert Thompson, the lower Broadway area, and the south town area. So, what you see is a depiction of a lot of spaghetti, a lot of alternative streets that we would take a look at. We actually conducted a high-level fatal flaw analysis and an urban design analysis of each of those 16 routes, and we also considered the relationship of these routes for streetcar to other transit services, such as Primo and the local bus network that's in place today. So, the conclusion of our conceptual analysis, again, that high-level fatal flaw analysis, we eliminated several streets from further consideration, including, you'll see, the Commerce Market Street combination. That's where the Primo bus circulation is occurring right now, connecting the west side and the east side of downtown. And it's also an ideal route for future high-capacity transit that might serve the region. Houston Street, we all know Houston streets have been narrowed in recent years. It would require the entire reconstruction of the street, and we felt that that was not an appropriate investment to seek in that area. We also noted that it had perpendicular access from St. Mary's or Alamo, which was creating a very challenging turn environment if we were to turn the streetcar. St. Mary's is where, this is north of Fourth Street in the River North area. There are a tremendous number, well, I won't say tremendous, but there are several turning movements that created a very circuitous and a very curvy alignment. That's a challenge for some of our track work. But it was, the key thing there was it was too far away from Broadway or Avenue B, which parallels Broadway to the west, from being an effective two-way couplet. And so, we eliminated St. Mary's north of Fourth Street, but as you'll see in a minute, not south of Fourth Street. Avenue B, that roadway that's parallel to the west of Broadway, it has, it's a major utility corridor. We also felt that Broadway with the current bus service was a far more suitable route for continued streetcar service. And we talked to you also last time about La Soya and the challenges there. It's a service entrance for many of the restaurants in the Alamo area. It has tremendous amount of reconstruction associated with utilities and the roadway that would be there. In addition to that, there's basements that are built out under the street and potential archaeological effects, so we eliminate La Soya from further consideration. And the northern loop that was identified here, we had potentially put on the table a loop up in the Pearl area that would circle around Pearl and come back down. We eliminated that from further consideration, mainly because we had a lot of turning movements and a lot of conflicts with the building that's progressing up in that area. So, what does that leave us? That leaves us, this is a composite image of the two major movements, an east-west movement and a north-south movement. And so, that spaghetti bowl is starting to kind of, we've kind of taken a little bit of the less quality routes, and we've got some that are starting to emerge. And what you see in this area is, and we'll talk about each one of these in just a slightly, a little bit more detail, primarily in the north-south movement, we have an option along Broadway and Alamo, or Broadway and going through the heart of downtown along St. Mary's and Navarro. And then, the east-west movement, we have an area across the north along Martin Pecan, and then across the southern part of and then across the southern part of downtown along Nueva, or as suggested by the board, along Cesar Chavez. I do want to mention that Cesar Chavez was added to the detailed set of alternatives after previous discussion with the board. We were looking at this in a very preliminary way as a potential avoidance alignment of going through the park and dealing with some of the Section 4F topics. But we also found that there were additional development opportunities, such as a grocery store and other things that are planned in that area. So it's your encouragement, we added that to the mix, and you'll see that in Alternatives Five and Six. So very briefly, I know you have this information in front of you, but I did want to characterize each one of the six alternatives that we are carrying forward into the detailed alternative alignment. You can see on the left of the screen, the west side multimodal center connected to the east side at Robert Thompson Transit Center along Nueva Street and cutting through the Hemisfer Park. And then we're matching that up with the north-south alignment of Broadway and Alamo. Now we'll keep the east-west constant as we move to Alternative Two. So we kept Nueva and going through Hemisfer Park constant, but we shifted the north-south alignment to be along Broadway and through the center of town in St. Mary's and Navarro. Alternative Three, we kept the north-south movement the same, so we're coming down Broadway through St. Mary's, Navarro, but we shifted the east-west movement from Nueva up to the north side of downtown along Martin Pecan. And then Alternative Four, we kept the Martin Pecan east-west movement the same, and we shifted back to Broadway and Alamo. So then we had a very quick briefing with you all last time, and then we had a couple of suggestions that I mentioned, Cesar Chavez. This is a variation on Alternative Three, and instead of going through the park from St. Mary's and from Nueva, from St. Mary's through the park, we actually hugged along Cesar Chavez on the southern end of downtown. Very briefly, this will change just a little bit because Alternative Six was suggested by the board to take a look at the continuation of Cesar Chavez west of St. Mary's, to be able to create what looks like a loop, might not operate like a loop, but it certainly looks like a loop. And so at that suggestion, we're going to be able to evaluate this to see how it fares compared to our evaluation criteria. So that, those represent the six alternatives that we are taking forward into the detailed screening process. So we are now going to be talking very briefly about the evaluation factors that we are going to be subjecting each of those six alternatives to. And as I mentioned, we're doing this right now. We'll be coming back to you next month in April with the initial results of the analysis that's coming forward. As you can see, we've identified, we've kind of grouped the evaluation factors into two major categories, a primary category and a secondary factor category. The primary category is primarily cost and ridership oriented, as well as connectivity and economic development. And then secondary are some of the incidental issues that are important, but key factors that we'll talk about in just the coming slides. I don't want to take a lot of time, and I'll respond to questions as we move forward. On the capital cost, we're taking into account each of the fully burdened costs associated with the project. So that's track miles, its vehicles, its bridges and replacement structures, its utilities, its right-of-way. Any of those factors is going into the capital cost estimate. So we'll be able to come back and compare each of these alternatives with their associated costs. In addition to the capital cost, we'll be identifying the O&amp;M cost, the operations and maintenance costs that are associated with the length of each of the vehicles that will be evaluated. A third area is the topic of economic development, and what we're trying to do here is balance those areas that have enough development to support ridership, but we're identifying those emerging economic developing areas that we'll be able to increase that ridership through subsequent development. And so the key factors, as you see, that contribute to this are not only the future land use, but the existing land use to create that balance, as well as any policies and incentives that the city has put into place. Other factors, as I mentioned, the connectivity, we're looking at connecting major activity centers that show up on each of those maps that we've talked about. How close do we come to the downtown core cultural destinations? And we're looking at a quarter-mile distance as being a reasonable walk distance to those activities. One of the other factors we're talking about is, and trying to avoid, are conflicts with any of our planned bus routes. And of course, we want these to be working together rather than being duplicating of services, and so that's going to be one of our key factors that we'll look at. One of the key areas also is ridership estimates, and we had a meeting this morning where we're starting to get some estimates, some generation out of our ridership model. We'll be able to present that information as we move forward. We're currently looking at 2010 ridership. We'll also be projecting to opening day 2017 ridership as we move those efforts forward. And then as with streetcar, traffic operations is a really key effort, is we're going to be in mixed flow, and so we'll want to make sure that we'll evaluate the impact that placing the streetcar into mixed flow will have upon the automobile traffic as well. As we've discussed earlier also, we'll be examining any of the adjacent parks and/or historic resources that are in the downtown area that have the potential to influence or impact our alignment decision, so we will identify those. And then as I also mentioned, we've had an initial discussion about urban design features and trying to correlate our alignments as it relates to those opportunities to maximize urban design potential here. What does that mean? This is kind of a little bit of a mess right now. It looks, our hope is to put a little more order to it, but the idea is that we're going to be presenting back to you in a much more readable format. A sample that we've kind of put the evaluation factors across the top, we're going to put the alignments along the left-hand side, we're going to be able to bring forth the ridership numbers, the capital cost estimates, to be able to give you a little bit of an opportunity to do what we talk about, a trade-off analysis. There's going to be some routes that are going to cost more, that are going to increase more ridership, and you're going to have to trade those off against other alternatives. So over the next three months, as we bring the information forward, we will be able to have a lot more discussion with you about the merits of each one of these alignments, as well as the segments that consist of each alignment.
So I'll wrap it up here. On Thursday evening, we will have our second public meeting related to the streetcar out at the library. We will be showing the six alternatives that we just showed to you and receive comments based on those, and integrate those comments as we move forward. And then in April, we hope to present the results of some of the preliminary detailed screening, basically just the facts. We will not be at a recommendation phase at that moment. We also will start to begin the vehicle specification, development, and procurement process discussion with you, and moving that critical part of this project forward. And talking about the maintenance facility, we do have to select a location where these trains will be stored and maintained. And then system infrastructure and potential agreements. A lot of these projects end up with multiple agreements, whether or not it be a public way use agreement, an operating agreement, a maintenance-of-way agreement, or something like that, that we'll have to enter to operate streetcar within the public right-of-way. So we'll be just having a brief discussion about that, but those types of agreements will probably be coming forward as we move forward through the process. So with that, Kyle and I would be happy to answer any questions about where we are today and how we're moving forward with the process.
Thank you. You all have been very responsive to the board's comments up to this point, so we appreciate all of the interaction as we proceed through this process. I have a couple of que, this also is not agendized for action, but I have a couple of questions where you can go back. I'm interested in the concept of you all already beginning to understand cost estimates and some routes being more expensive than others. At what point does the board have the option of deciding, for example, on capital cost, on delivery methodology, and looking at alternatives for integrated delivery, design, build, things that might help us control the cost and put the burden on the constructor, if you will, as opposed to the burden?
On the agency.
On us.
Yeah. Very soon, Chairman, we're having preliminary discussions internally about the different delivery methods and putting together a presentation that we can deliver that to the board so we can have that discussion. So that conversation, it's timely, it's beginning to be that time where we actually talk about how we do deliver this program and this project as part of this, as part of rolling this out to the community. So very timely and coming soon.
We'll have that around the same time that you all begin to bring back what, I guess you're already getting, which is you're already getting preliminary cost information.
Yeah. I would estimate the May-June timeframe, we'll have the delivery conversation with the board.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Ponnet?
In your elimination of other routes, I know that we had added, or the board had suggested, you consider Cesar Chavez. I just wondered, it wasn't clear to me in the presentation whether you'd gone through the same analysis inclusive of Cesar Chavez, or whether you were just tacking it on as a, we'll get to that analysis later.
Well, yes, it's your suggestion. We've added it to the list of alternatives that will be examined during the detailed evaluation. So Alternative Six represents that full extent of Cesar Chavez.
So the elimination process, you didn't get to the point of talking about whether that particular route should be eliminated? You didn't do that kind of analysis as you did with the other streets?
No, no. I think what we hope that we see is, by subjecting it to the same level of scrutiny as the other alternatives, it will become apparent whether it's, you know, an up or down.
Right, right. And I think I saw calendaring, I was sick for a period of about a week, and so I saw all sorts of weird things. But I think I saw that you had meetings scheduled with certain, with the city, I think, and maybe some others. I wondered whether you'd gotten feedback about the, did you present this particular set of potential alternatives, and I wondered what feedback you got on those.
Yeah, after we went to the PPD Committee, we did go ahead and meet with the stakeholders, the main funding partners, being county and the city, met with staff, senior staff associated with both of those organizations, and basically just rolled them through the same presentation, tell them where we are, and see if there was any major feedback or any major fatal flaws, did we miss a street, or anything like that. And I think what I would, why I would say that is, is it seems like we have six very good alternatives here to move forward, so that's kind of the flavor we got out of those presentations.
And then finally, to the extent that we're getting feedback to you, I'm assuming we're doing that just at these meetings, or is there another process we should be utilizing as well? I know that they're committing meetings and so forth, but I want to be clear as to how you're getting feedback, because I'm assuming it's at our board meetings, but tell me if I'm mistaken.
Yeah, this is agendized every single month on the PPD Committee. This is something we're rolling through as part of that process. I would, if you would like individual briefings, I'd be happy to perform that also, but mainly board meetings, PPD meetings, and, you know, just general comments.
And workshops. We plan to have two additional workshops, one on the technology, which would be the next one, highly, you know, focused on the vehicle per se, and a second that would focus in on the evaluation, the detailed evaluation information.
And I think that's great, because I think, obviously, there's so many moving parts to this to begin with, number one. Number two, it's important that I think we all be on the same page as much as possible, and to hear each other's feedback, and to have staff hear sort of the distillation of all of that feedback. I think whatever decision we make as a board has to be obviously transparent and make the most sense to everybody, so, you know, I would encourage that kind of process going forward.
Thank you.
Just two quick points following Mr. Ponnet's questions. Following our last work meeting, I had provided a memorandum expressing the thoughts that were behind the suggestion of Cesar Chavez, and sent it to our board chair and CEO, emphasizing a local meeting can provide that, I think, more broadly as we go forward with the, with consistency to the Open Meetings Act as well. And secondly, I would just like to thank you for incorporating the planning process, what the chair had said earlier concerning board input at that last working meeting. And finally, this has always struck me as one of the things that, in the delivery aspect of the streetcar project, that this should also, and I want, just like to encourage staff to see the potential of this as a jobs program too, on the local level, and other transit authorities such as Baltimore have worked with the comparable to Alamo workforce and so on, in creatively providing jobs for the local community, engaged in the delivery of the project. So just to encourage that.
Thank you all. Mr. Ponnet?
Sorry. I would get, I'd appreciate getting a copy of Dr. Gambetta's input. I think that, you know, obviously, it's something that he's intended to help raise the level of our thinking on this, and again, just for consistency, I think it'd be helpful to all of us to get that and see the merits of it.
Thank you all.
I'll send the final new copy of it and distribute it consistently.
I'll distribute it.
Counsel advise on.
Part of my Friday newsletter.
Excuse me.
Mr. Martin?
On the streetcar line and the total route, are any of the power lines going to be underground or are they all going to be overhead?
That's an evaluation we're going through right now. As of, you start with them all above ground, and you work your way through that, but I think that is definitely part of the conversation that's coming up as part of our conversation about the vehicle technology and how we deliver this project, because there are options to that, and we need to explore those options. But right now, they're above ground, but we need to have that discussion, so.
Well, probably, I may be the only one on this board, but I grew up in Dallas and I rode the streetcars. And in fact, I used to help the conductors change the power line at the end of the line. And I really have some concern and problems about the overhead power lines and what, they're ugly, very honestly. So I'm hoping that we can do something to make that look better.
And just on that, there are alternatives available, and Mr. Allison and I had talked with some people associated with that in DC and so on. I know the staff is well aware of all of that technology that's available, so that you can eliminate, especially through historical environmentally sensitive areas for aesthetic reasons, the overhead lines. Would encourage staff, which I know they're doing, to pursue that course too.
Maybe you could send us that memo too.
I'll get it, write on it, actually, with attachments from.
Great. Thank you all. The time is now 7:37, and the VIA Metropolitan Transit Board of Trustees will go into a closed executive session. The items we will discuss during the executive sessions are as follows. Item 11.8, entitled "Real Estate: Wonderland of the Americas," which is an executive session item pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, entitled "Consultation with Attorney," in Section 551.072, entitled "Real Property." And item 12, entitled "Legal Briefing," which is an executive session item pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, entitled "Consultation with Attorney." All persons who are authorized to attend the executive session, please proceed to the small conference room.
It is now 8:10 PM, and we are officially coming out of a closed executive session regarding Agenda Items 11, 8, and 12. No deliberations, public policy, or vote taken occurred during the executive session. Need a motion to adjourn?
Aye.
We are adjourned.